Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May tenth City Council meeting. The first item up of the evening is our public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have fifteen seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes and the end of your time to speak. And we have thirty-two people signed up to speak tonight. So, we'll start out with Mary Layton, followed by Jerry Diethelm.
My name is Mary Layton. I live at forty-fourty-six Normandy Way, that's Betty Country. I'm here tonight, on behalf of Network Charter School, to ask you to direct city staff to negotiate with us to find a deal we can manage to purchase or lease eight fifty-eight Pearl. We have information from several people knowledgeable about property values downtown, and with nothing to gain for offering the opinion, that the asking price is more than the property is worth. We've asked for and offered to pay for a new appraisal, so that we could support, so we could enter into new negotiations. Rick Duncan offered to review the old appraisal for free. We know that you generally support Network Charter School and our mission. We know that you have a lot on your to-do list right now, important work that has to be done, with not very many resources, and apparently, the endless need to balance priorities and win support from other agencies and actors. We know that it's not your fault, Network Charter School will soon be homeless, and that it's not your job to provide a home for a public school. Still tonight, we urge you to take this opportunity to do one thing that is entirely under your control, that hardly has any impact on other plans, and that could before too long turn an economic liability into a downtown asset. Right now, eight fifty-eight Pearl is costing you money, and it's empty. If Network Charter took it over, we could at the very least generate some income immediately for the property. Within a short time, not immediately, but we could provide work for folks hired to bring it up to code. Eventually, we could move in and fill that space with the sounds of students learning. You can make this happen. None of this is simple, but very smart people work for the city, and they will find ways to make a deal solid if you tell them to. Every public servant we've encountered takes very seriously the mandate to operate faithfully within the mandates of your policies, but many would like to help us get that building. This is your opportunity to secure the position of one lively and productive downtown establishment, to add materially to a vibrant downtown, and to show support for students who want and need to be educated in the heart of our city. For a change, instead of having to worry about urban renewal districts, and county jails, and layoffs, and service cuts, you can decide to choose action. You can sustain the life of a good school. We urge you to direct city staff to bring you a new proposal for eight fifty-eight Pearl that we can both agree is financially manageable, and that will nurture hope and optimism.
Next is Jerry Diethelm, followed by Wendy McKenzie.
I'm Jerry Diethelm, at twenty-six fifty-two Aggett Street. I'm in Allen Zelenka's ward. I'm here to ask you to use your wisdom and authority to help keep the Network Charter School downtown, and even more specifically, to direct city staff to find some mutually acceptable accommodation for the school in the surplus city building at eight fifty-eight Pearl Street. Time, as you know, is running out. The school will be out of business at the end of June unless it can find some place to move. Places with required school occupancy rating, or that can be brought up to code, are very rare and almost nonexistent downtown, but eight fifty-eight can be made to work, and the school wants to stay downtown. Imagine a high school that wanted to stay downtown. City staff have been extremely helpful, and have already determined how this could be done. But that, but the situation calls for some council direction in order to create the financial fit that will make this work. Now, I know we're going to be talking about urban renewal downtown, and instead of talking about how this does not impact schools in a negative way, why not make it impact schools in a positive way? It's an investment that will pay off in many ways. A high school at eight fifty-eight Pearl that backs out on the park blocks is a perfect way to add the extra IDs and activities we need downtown on our public spaces, and it's an obvious educational partner to the new LCC project. It builds on the presence of the LTD transit station and the library. It brings young people with small carbon feet in the most positive way downtown, actually keeps young people with small carbon feet in the most positive way downtown. Imagine a high school that didn't have a large parking lot. I'm asking this council to take timely and needed action to ensure that a downtown-oriented high school, a proven educational asset to our community, is a continuing partner in our downtown renewal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Wendy McKenzie, followed by Daniel Sellers.
My name is Wendy McKenzie. I live at two ninety East Thirty-eighth. I'm in Betty Taylor's district. I'm a founding board member of the school. I started in two thousand and three, and I've been a teacher since two thousand and four, so a little history. Our school was centered in the Whittaker neighborhood in our first year, and when it was time to transition, and grow, and move, we knew we had to go downtown. Our students, we only had sixty at the time, needed to be near the Lane Transit Main Center and the library, two community resources who are an extension of our school in the most positive way. We found the building on forty-five West Broadway, and rented just one office that is now only used by the admin, and we had three classrooms and admin in that space, and that was a crazy year. But as time went on, the other nonprofits found better facilities, and we spread out into the whole building, and now we use ten classrooms and the office suite for admin, because our school has doubled in size since being downtown. Our need to be downtown has not changed. We have students who come from every corner of Eugene Springfield and the outskirts, like Elmira, Junction City, Crestwell, McKenzie Bridge, and Coburg, and to all of them, we have given them what they were looking for, a small school with a big heart, and that would help them grow academically as well as personally. Every morning and afternoon, they commute for up to forty-five minutes to get, so that they could be a part of Network Charter School. It is also important that NCS stays downtown in order to facilitate students commuting to other classes and sites. I teach at Nearby Nature's Yurt facility in Alton Baker Park, and students bus, bike, and walk to make it out there for science classes in the best laboratory in that there is, in nature. Other teachers at Nearby Nature use buses to travel to do gardening for Food for Land County, or native plant restoration in other parks in the city. They also go out to play ultimate frisbee in our parks as well. From my experience with Nearby Nature as a park host in Alton Baker Park, I learned a lot about the park's history and other houses that once stood there, and I learned that the city, in the past, has decided they don't want to be a landlord, and so that, and that's not what we're asking for. And for a lot of reasons, that makes sense. But when they gave Nearby Nature a park host contract ten years ago, they gained a wonderful experience of having a place that not only has been a place where Network Charter Schools have flourished, but also, and to be able to learn biology, and earth science, and environmental science, but it's become a launch point for nature lovers, young and old, to go out and enjoy the most beautiful park in our area, and it's little or no cost to the city. And we also provide services for security for them as well. So you have that opportunity, again, to work with a solid nonprofit, Network Charter School, who can only improve an empty building, and continue to enliven the downtown area with youthful energy, and allow teens to flourish here as well. They are the future shoppers, workers, and voters of Eugene, and the closer they are to the heart, the more connected they are with the city. I would like you to please consider the building at eight fifty-eight Pearl. Thanks.
Next is Daniel Sellers, followed by Denise Velasco.
My name is Daniel Sellers. I live at one hundred A Crocker Lane. I'm a student at Network Charter School. I have been since seventh grade, and I'm a sophomore now. Network Charter Schools helped a lot of kids that just didn't fit with the normal school system. It's helped a lot of people, a lot of kids reach their goals that they had given up on completely for diplomas and graduation, and even college. So, I just want to say, Network Charter School belongs downtown, and it should stay downtown, and you can help keep it there.
Thank you. Denise Velasco is next, followed by Nicholas Nightmegs.
Hi, my name is Denise Velasco. I live at one hundred Crocker. I've been a member of the Network Charter School family for the last six years. This fall, we were under the assumption that we would be getting the building at eight fifty-eight Pearl, and it was pretty devastating to hear, a couple weeks ago, that we weren't going to be getting the building at eight fifty-eight Pearl. And since then, I've had many students express their concerns about Network Charter School not existing next year. These are some of the things that students have been talking to me about. Students have told me that this is the first school that they've ever been successful in, and they don't want to go back to their neighborhood schools. I've also had students with disabilities talk to me about going to, you know, back to their neighborhood schools, and they're worried about the large class sizes, having to get pulled out of classes, because at Network Charter School, we don't pull kids out of their classes. They stay in the small classes with their peers. And they've also expressed to me that they're really worried about getting lost if they have to return to their neighborhood school and not be heard. However, what concerns me the most is the countless students who said that they would drop out if Network Charter School does not exist next year. And there was actually quite a few students that have told, who have expressed this to me. In addition to those students, we also have students that homelessness is a personal issue, and the current uncertainty of our situation is having a serious effect on them. Upon hearing the news about the school, one of our students, who is currently homeless, said, "Great, now I am really homeless."
Thank you. Next is Nicholas Nightmegs, followed by Zach Bryson.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Nightmegs. I live at eighteen fifty-seven South Bertelson Road. I speak today for the Undying Support of Network Charter School. I myself have been a homeschooler for a good portion of my life, and had to jump between going to Home Source Resource Center, and between Link Community College, and then finally being able to settle at Network Charter. I personally think that the council helping out Network Charter to find this home is of the utmost importance, for many reasons. One, because of the school being where it is, I no longer get asked, when I'm at the library, if I have a gram of marijuana to spare, because of the sign that says, you know, there is no dealing drugs or anything within a thousand feet of a school. I think that the school position as it is, even moving just a little bit, is extremely beneficial to the city. My girlfriend is homeless, and had nowhere to go, no home, no school, no place would accept her, she couldn't get a GED, she couldn't get anything. And she was able, with the help of my friend's mother, be able to convince Network Charter that she should come, and she did, and she loved it there. Unfortunately, she was not able to keep going. She lives in Springfield, and it just didn't really work out, and she's going to Gateway School now, but what she had with Network Charter, it worked out for her extremely. And I would want nothing more than every other child who goes there to be able to enjoy it and learn from it as much as they do. It's really beneficial to the kids that they're able to stay there. You know, as stated before, LTD, the library, there are so many things downtown that Network Charter, I would say, not even just wants, almost needs to stay functioning. But, thank you.
Thank you. Zach Bryson is next, followed by Fiona Rose Dow.
My name is Zach Bryson. I live at fourteen fifty-five Santa Rosa. I come to you as one of the many stories that will be talked about tonight, as someone who wouldn't have made it in any other public high school, and wasn't able to, that's why I joined Network Charter School. And I'm going to keep it short, but it really changed my life in the best possible way. I really don't know where I'd be right now. That's all I can say. I really don't know where I'd be right now without Network Charter School. And I'm graduating this year, which, at the beginning of my involvement in Network Charter School, I'd never thought would happen. So, yeah, they've given me a lot, including possibly next year, college education, which I wouldn't have had. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Fiona Rose Dow, followed by Nathan Spain.
Hi, my name is Fiona Rose Dow. I live on four twenty-five South Ford Street, Cottage Grove, Oregon. I am a student at Network Charter School, and I just want to say that I have heard a lot of students at the school, myself included, that they think of the school as a second home, and that they think of the people here as a family, and that they don't know what they would do without it. Please don't take this statue away.
Next is Nathan Spain, followed by Richard Aldrich.
Hello, my name is Nathan Spain. I live at twelve seventy West Hare Lane in the River Road area, and I am an eleventh grader at Network Charter School. Let me tell you a little bit about why Network Charter is important to me and the students who go there. Network Charter is more than just a school, it is a community. It is, if you were, a sub-community of the larger downtown Eugene community. And I say that it's a community because everyone there knows each other, they know each other's names, they are friends, they are friends with the teachers, and I have heard a lot of people say that NCS is like a second home to them. I have heard a lot of people say that there are no school that they would rather go to, no place they would rather be than Network Charter. And frankly, I think that high school students saying that they would rather be at the school than anywhere else is something that you don't get a lot in most high schools. But now that NCS is facing homelessness, and the fact of its future existence is no longer a certainty, I think a lot of people, myself included, have been very frightened by the prospect of not having a Network Charter School to go to in the coming years. I, for one, want more than just my last year and my graduation, I want the knowledge that NCS will be able to continue to thrive and prosper and exist in the future, even when I am not there. It has been amazingly beneficent to me, as a homeschooler. I did not have any prior experience with public high schools before going to Network Charter, and was honestly rather afraid of the entire public high school system. Network Charter helped me grow from a rather anti-soci, psy, isolated person into the person whom you see speaking in front of all of you today. It has helped me amazingly to grow confidence and socios, and it has been amazingly beneficent, not just to me, but to many of the students who go there. It is my fondest hope that, in the future years, I can look back on this period of time and think of it not as the untimely demise of a school that ought to have continued to grow and survive and prosper, but instead, as a troubled period of NCS's history that we managed to overcome, and I know that the City Council can help Network Charter overcome their current problems, and I would like to express my fond desire for the continued existence of the school, and if the City Council is willing to help us to exist, then I would like to thankfully thank you and ask you to do so.
Thank you so much. Richard Aldrich is next, followed by Brenna Sellers.
I'm Richard Aldrich, and I live on twenty-two twenty-five Salem Avenue in Albany. I'm born and raised in Eugene. I go to Network Charter School. I'm eighteen, I've been there since I was a sophomore, so I'm a senior now. When I was in a lot of public schools, I was like, getting threatened to be jumped after school and whatnot, because of the music I listened to. I skipped months on end, and then went to Network, and got better at like, a lot of skills, as in reading, and writing, and doing a little bit better in math, and actually going to school more. And the reason I got into Network was, my little sister went there before me, and I went and checked it out, and I really liked it, and I went there the following year, after my freshman year, and whatnot, tried to go back to a normal school, really couldn't, just didn't want to go, went back to Network. I actually, my attendance went up more, and I actually showed up to school. I used to like, not really like, talk in class, and now I'm like, always just getting to any conversation that they have in the class. So, I really think that the school should still be here. It's been a great time for me, even though I'm coming back to the school hopefully next year, I'd, still, it'd be fun, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brenna Sellers, followed by, it looks like Gabrielle Lagoe.
Hello, my name is Brenna Sellers, and I've been a student at Network Charter School for, since seventh grade, so, three years, I live at one hundred A Crocker Lane, and I, you know, the fact that we don't really have much homework helps me with, you know, my dance career, which I'm hoping to get me through college and stuff, and, you know, if this school in a way, I would have to quit dance, which is like, my life, it's one of my communities, you know. This school is part of my community too, it's like, I consider it my whole life, I guess. It's part of my everything, so, please, if you can, just help us keep the school. I really love it.
Thank you. Next is Gabrielle Lagoe, followed by Dawn Sellers.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Lagoe, and I also live at one hundred A Crocker Lane. I'm the mother of Daniel Brenna Sellers. I just want to say a little bit, I'm a parent, and I've also been involved since about last November, following very closely with a, what became a more of a formal parent-teacher group, to try to see what was going to happen with the building at eight fifty-eight. So I've been on board since we talked about the lease option that didn't go through, and I'm very, very aware of all the insides and outsides, and I can appreciate this city's predicament. I understand the financial pieces in this, I've, you know, had classes in urban planning. I know that the city does not want this building on their books, and they need to do some things to move it, but I think, I want to just do two things. I want to say that we all know realistically, in the current climate and the environment, and in the current budget situation, it, you know, there's not people knocking, banging down the door to take eight fifty-eight. It's workable as a school for us, for several reasons, and one is because, the minute Mary found out about the building, and she heard it was going to be available, she immediately started doing what this school does best, she networked. She started collaborating with other nonprofits, so we could see how we could fill up that building, how we could have renters in the building, to make it a profitable thing. We started talking about upping our capital campaign, which had been kind of slowly pledging along, but suddenly, we're like, looking at extreme makeover, and the Pepsi free, all kinds of ways we can raise money to make this work. But it's, it's, we're dead in the water right now, and people say, well, there's, you know, where can you go? We've looked at other buildings, but we have such a short time period now to turn everything around, that this school truly is at risk of not being there. I think you're hearing lots and lots of students here tell you why it's important to them. I'm going to tell you why it's important to the city of Eugene, because there's a collaborative effort in this city to continue the downtown, make it more vital again. You know, I picture people at Saturday Market, having a place to come in on Saturday to the first floor, the vendors, and have a place to take a nap, have a place to relax, have a, make this building something that adds to that square, and those two parks, and those places. We just are asking for a chance to figure out a way that this can work out, so that we can continue our capital campaign, we can keep going, we can try to raise money, we just can't let it fall flat. And I don't want to come back here a year from now, and see that building empty, because it didn't sell, it didn't go anywhere, and then you've got to face these kids that walk down the street every day and say, "We couldn't make it happen." I know we can work it out and make it happen. It's, you have to be able to vision a little bit, and trust that everyone here tonight is going to do their best.
Next is Dawn Sellers, followed by Michelle Rose.
Hi, I'm Dawn Sellers, also one hundred A Crocker Lane. You've heard from my wife and my two kids tonight, and, so I'll be brief, and I just want to say that I'm an extremely satisfied parent of two Network Charter students, that I've seen the great work they do with a wonderful and vibrant group of young people, many of whom come to my house after school sometimes. The school itself is a vibrant community, and I'm just asking you to do everything you can, as outlined by Mary Layton, to help them have an opportunity to continue the wonderful work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Rose is next, followed by Anna Watt, I'm, anyway, Tana Coniman, that's what it looks like, Coniman.
Hello, my name is Michelle Rose. I live in Cottage Grove. You heard from my daughter earlier. I am here as a parent, as a middle school special educator, and as a manager of a downtown Eugene business. My son also went to Network Charter School at the very beginning. It was his stepping stone to then go on to public school. He now says he wishes that he had stayed at Network Charter School, now that he has graduated from a public high school. As a business, I feel that these kids, as a member of a downtown business, these kids add a lot to downtown. You know, every day, I deal with some pretty unsavory kids. They are not students from this school. Adding the positive nature that they bring changes the whole demographics of the kids downtown. Their classroom is all of Eugene. It makes a lot of sense to keep them downtown, where all these resources are available. We went today, and we looked up at Twenty-fifth and Portland, where there is another possible school site. It doesn't have the resources. The kids would be hopping buses all over the place. There is nowhere for them to gather during lunch, or wherever. There are not places for them to go eat their lunch. Downtown offers those opportunities. The library is there, the parks are over there. You know, my daughter loves this school. She was a great student when she did go to public school, but never quite fit in. This is the first place that she has felt comfortable. And I will say that if NCS is not downtown, there's a good chance that she will be homeschooled. As someone who taught in public schools, especially the middle school age, I know it's a really hard time for kids, and when they don't feel comfortable in their schools, they tend not to go. If these kids don't have a home, they will be out on the streets, and who knows where they will end up, and, you know, I can only hope that you will reconsider and look at that school as a viable alternative for them, and thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tana Coniman, and followed by Kimberly Gleiden.
Hi, my name is Tana Coniman, and I live at thirteen fifty-seven West Eighth Avenue. If you could take a peek into any classroom on any given day at Network Charter School, you're going to see real-life conversations between the students and the teachers. Luckily, we have had a breakdown of the typical student-teacher relationship, and I feel like we are all, you know, friends at our school. They call us by our first names, you know, when we talk to kids, our conversations extend well beyond, like, curriculum. We care about our kids, we care about what they're doing after school, what they're going to do with their future, and we deal with some difficult students. Um, and we deal with some difficult students, um, but we love them and that's what keeps us coming back, um, day after day. Um, I don't think if, if we loved our jobs and loved our students as much as we do, I don't think we'd be able to come back. And the thought of not being able to deal with those students is very disheartening, um, the students that we have and that we deal with just to be lost in our community if our school doesn't continue is very saddening, so, um, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kimberly Gladen followed by Eleanor Long.
Hi, I'm Kimberly Gladen, um, 361 West Broadway. I live downtown and I work downtown, I do market downtown, I spend probably ninety-five percent of my time downtown. I see these kids every day. Um, I see a lot of kids every day, but these are the good kids. These are the kids I want downtown. These are the kids that are setting the good example, they're doing civic things downtown, they're making our downtown a better place, and they're learning at the same time how to be good citizens and how to contribute to our community. I believe that the building at 858 Pearl is ideal. I mean, when it came up for sale, I fell in love with it. And when I heard they wanted to go in, I thought, what a great match, they're right next to the park, there's a little stage there that's used by market, I mean, certainly on the, when market's not there, they could use that as a lovely stage area for student productions, which would add to the livelihood downtown. They give a young person perspective in a positive way. I see so many negative things downtown from other kids that I don't want this example to go away. I feel it's vital to the revitalization of downtown to have them here and I want you to make it so, to put them in that building, do what you have to do to get them there. Um, I believe when we were on the safety committee that I was on, um, it was kind of assumed that they'd be in that building as kind of a small piece of the overall safety plan. Um, I'm very disappointed to find out that that's being dragged. I mean, this is really important to our downtown. It's important we nurture these kids in a positive way and show them we care, otherwise they're just going to end up being more problems downtown and that's the last thing we need. Um, these kids are passionate about our town and school and, um, I really think it's a small thing. You sold the pit for a dollar, I mean, you're putting thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars into promoting, um, other events and other things around town, uh, things that are for-profit, I mean, this is a small thing for our youth. This is a small thing for education and for our downtown and, um, I would hope that you would do everything you can to negotiate this in a way so that we can all live with it. And, um, I would be very disappointed if this doesn't happen and I think it would be devastating for the overall town, plan downtown for this not to happen. And also for our community and the future of our community, these students are our future. They're our next civic leaders, they're our next business people, and the proximity to the businesses and the city government downtown is an educational experience, not just for them, but for all of us who live there and live here and work here and spend our time on the streets and, um, I believe that you have the power to do that and I hope you have the wisdom also and the fortitude and the courage to do that and to make our town really the great place that it's longing to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Eleanor Long followed by Jared Woods.
Hello, my name is Eleanor Long and I live 775 West Eleventh Avenue. In my opinion, a more sustainable, livable, vibrant downtown includes a public school like Network Charter School. It's a place where students have a safe and nurturing environment to learn. I'm pretty much not going to say anything you haven't already heard, I just want to reiterate it. I am a teacher at Network Charter School, I teach environmental studies and mathematics. I've been teaching there for three years, ever since I got my degree at Pacific University, which is just down the street from Network Charter School. I believe that keeping NCS downtown allows Eugene to have a positive presence of youth, it encourages the vibrancy that everybody wants and longs for downtown. It benefits our students, all the things that have been mentioned earlier, the transportation issues, the access to the library, the restaurants, the other local businesses that need their customers and clients. It also reinforces my classroom lessons. It, the downtown acts as my classroom to teach about sustainability, to teach about civics, to teach about urban planning. So to imagine our downtown without our school just, um, makes me wonder, if we can't provide the downtown that represents the life we want to live, what message are we sending our students? What are they actually going to learn? So, right now, I'm in a really great place to teach what I teach. Um, I really, truly believe life happens, a sustainable life happens downtown, so please, as city council, encourage to your best abilities to house NCS at 858 Pearl Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Woods is next followed by Suzanne Bradley.
My name is Jared Woods, I live at 775 West Eleventh. Um, I am also a student at Network Charter School. Um, I'm a student because I learn more from these kids than they'll ever learn from me. Um, I learn more from the staff than they'll ever learn from me. I've learned about civic engagement tonight, I've never been to city council, I've never registered to vote, I'm a non-engaged community member in the political process. But this school clearly means so much to all of these kids, it means so much to these teachers, it means so much of us, to us to stay downtown, that, that's why we're all here. Um, I would have preferred not walking here in the rain from my home in downtown, but I did, because this means that much to me and to all of these people. Most of my life happens downtown. Um, we're a community organization that networks with other community organizations that proves that a city is not just a bunch of autonomous businesses, we are, rely upon one another. Um, the courses that I've taught at Network use, rely heavily on the Eugene Weekly, it was one of our major sources, staying informed about what's going on in the city, um, who's ranting and raving in the letters to the editor, engaging in that process. Education happens for our kids on a daily basis with every time they step foot at the bus station, navigating their way around town. Um, we're not a suburban school. Um, if Eugene really wants to emphasize the urban renewal and the fact that we, we want to create a vibrant city center, I think keeping Network Charter School as a downtown commodity, not commodity, as a valuable resource in downtown is, is essential. I'd also like to end with, we, as students and staff, support so many downtown businesses and I'm just afraid of the surplus of day-old bagels that would happen at Bagels Fair if we were to leave downtown.
Suzanne Bradley is next and then I'm, I didn't get a clue of how to pronounce this correctly, so I'm probably not going to pronounce it correctly, but Kevin Proceu. So, so right now we have Suzanne Bradley, yes.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Bradley, I live at 84729 Macbeth Road, just outside of Eugene, but I teach in Eugene, I teach glass fusing, um, I'm an art teacher at Eugene Glass School, which is a satellite organization that belongs with NCS. And I wear this shirt with pride, I'm, I'm so happy to be a teacher for NCS. The kids fill me with pride every time I spend a day with them, um, even when they're challenging days, um, I'm still proud to be their teacher. We've done community service projects, um, everywhere we've gone with our community service projects, people always say, "This is one of the best groups we've ever had here," and I just, I'm just so thrilled to be with them. Um, we went to Green Hill on our last community service project, Green Hill Humane Society. We got back from that, we were all grungy and dirty and we'd been out clipping blackberries and digging dirt and, and rearranging flower beds and, uh, we had a rally downtown and I thought, all these kids, as soon as they're turned loose, they're going to leave. They all met at the downtown rally to support our school, they all feel that strongly about it and like I said, I'm just so grateful to be there. I would love to see them move into 858 Pearl, it's just a great location for them and I know that hopefully you can make this happen for them and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Kevin's going to come up here and tell me how to pronounce his name correctly, Kevin Proceu.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, uh, Proceu, is how you say it, you just sneeze it and it comes right out, so, Proceu. So, uh, I have a few things to distribute if I could, just one for everybody. So, I feel kind of like the odd one out here tonight because I'm here to talk about Beltline. Uh, obviously, uh, people are pretty passionate about a number of things and I thought it was just the slogan on the city website or the new donut shop down the street, but obviously we have other things that, uh, people are very passionate about and so I can appreciate that. So, history basically teaches us, uh, that here in Eugene, uh, when, when you go to rename a road, um, Martin Luther King or Centennial to Martin Luther King taught us that people can get pretty, um, passionate about that subject too, so, um, I think that, uh, when something like the Beltline renaming comes along, it's a little cause for concern and it makes people, um, say, "Hey, wait, what's going on here, let's, let's stop and think about this a little bit." Um, so I know that, uh, several of you, uh, have said that you weren't aware of the cost or the other implications of renaming Beltline. Um, at the same time, um, I have to say that I don't think that the thing that you do is write a letter supporting the, the renaming, um, to the governor and the Transportation Commission. If you don't know what the, the things that are going on associated with the, the renaming, like the cost, then that seems, uh, like a mistake. So, um, I don't know how soon all of you knew about the potential renaming and that's, um, what I gave you there is the timeline and on page five, there's a little arrow pointing in there somewhere, um, this is a little game we can all play here, you can tell us when you knew about the renaming. Now, I'll tell you what, how the public knew about it, we, we had one day. We had no idea that the road was going to be renamed until the Register Guard came up with their article March 10th, voted on, uh, the 11th. You guys sent your letter on the 10th and that took you thirty seconds, uh, in a council session meeting, not in a, uh, public forum like this, thirty seconds to basically wave that through and get that through. So, I think that we would like to have that explained to us and, and know exactly what you were thinking there. Um, but I actually kind of suspect that maybe what was going on is that, you know, you've got the governor of Oregon, he's asking you to, you know, uh, basically go along with this stuff, but I, I say as the taxpayers, I mean, who, who are you guys working for? Are you working for Ted or are you working for us? So, basically, I'm here, uh, to ask you guys to think about and consider, um, putting a motion on the table that would rescind the city's support for renaming Beltline in favor of a more public process. So, I thank you for letting me talk today. Oh, and this, uh, sixteen thousand sixty, or sixteen hundred sixty-eight signatures, actually, these aren't the signatures, we sent them up to Salem, but it was a packet this thick, people that are opposed to the renaming of Beltline.
Thank you. Next is Mark Callahan followed by David Maloney.
Don't worry, Kevin, I'm here to speak about Beltline too, so you're not the old man out. Um, my name is Mark Callahan, I live at 3621 Malon Avenue, Eugene, Oregon, i.e. George Polings District or Ward. Um, as a future potential Lain County Commissioner, I sternly and directly ask, "Why did this council vote unanimously in a work session of all sessions, not in public open forum to support the renaming of Beltline? Does this council even listen to the will of the people and the constituents that each of you represent? It is a wasteful expense that even the current Lain County Commissioners voted unanimously against. The Plan B that the Oregon Transportation Commission proposed to only spend fifteen hundred dollars for two signs, then replace the others over the next ten to fifteen years is only a smokescreen, being that the two hundred fifty thousand dollars will still be spent over the next ten to fifteen years. I am absolutely certain that this, that the constituents of each of your districts or your wards would rather have potholes filled in their neighborhoods than to waste two hundred fifty thousand dollars on new signs. The new signs do not create any new jobs. I am giving this council a chance as a plan of action, right now, tonight, to rescind their support of the OTC proposal to rename Beltline as a show of solidarity. That this council is accountable to the citizens you represent. You can add this as new business or under the action section of tonight's agenda if you want to. Will you do this? If not, why? And if so, thank you in advance. Thank you.
David Maloney is next followed by Andrea Gillespie.
Hello, my name is David Maloney, I live at 30612 Butterfly Lane. I'm also known as Minihands. I went through all my schooling here in Eugene, I've been here since nineteen eighty-six. I've got three jobs, executive director of Minihands Community, teacher at the Network Charter School. And everything I wish to say has already been said to a large degree, but I'd like you to know something about the, the staff at the Network Charter School. I have never, I've worked in several different places and I've never worked anywhere where the teachers come with such heart for the kids. They come and they're passionate about their subject because these nonprofit organizations that have come together, they're not required, you don't have wrestling coaches teaching earth science because they want to do wrestling. You have teachers here that are teaching what they're passionate about to these kids and they come, well, they're overworked and underpaid, but that's not new news. They come with such heart for these kids and the kids respond to that. And the kids walk into that classroom and they become something greater than they were before. They go out and they do service projects in the community. In my class alone, they've done helping the hungry, the homeless, there, several of them were really engaged in getting a skate park downtown. A lot of them really looked into their heart of hearts to find out what they wanted to see change in the world and in the community and then they took action to do that. Now, if you want to look at the success of any community, you look to the children. How do we treat the children? How do we treat our elders? These young ones here feel such a connection with this staff and this group and this people and the downtown. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So Andrea Gillespie is next followed by Joe Kennedy.
Hi, my name's Andrea Gillespie and I live at 3877 North Clary and I didn't realize that if we were on the agenda item that we really couldn't make a statement. Um, is that what you said when I came in, something about that? But, um, we are on the agenda, so, um, what I would like to say is that I'm the manager of Cascade Adult Center and I'm here with, um, some of the other staff members and so when our agenda item comes up, we're number C approval of Trudy Kaufman Center lease, um, that we are here if you have any questions. So, thank you.
I want to, uh, just tell you to go ahead and make your comments right now, you can have your three minutes, uh, both of you can have your three minutes right now, because it's on our consent calendar and you're not, we're not having a hearing tonight, so you can.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, um, I am the manager of Cascade Adult Center and, um, we have been in the, at the Trudy Kaufman Center, we're with Cascade Health Solutions, we're part of Cascade Health Solution and we've been in the Trudy Kaufman Center for, um, the last four and a half years and, um, we just want to say, ask you to please consider, um, renewing our lease for at least two years to give us a chance to find a new place, um, within that two years. Um, it's been a great location for us, it's served us really well. The, um, participants who come to the center, um, a lot of them are eighteen, um, have some sort of memory loss, we serve anyone eighteen years or older, um, and it's just a homey location and it's been great and, um, we really need a little extra time to figure out, uh, what, where we'll be going and what we will be doing and so we're just asking you to please consider, um, continuing our lease. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Joe Kennedy followed by Mark Robenowitz.
Good evening, Madam, uh, Mayor and Board. Uh, I am Joe Kennedy and I'm president of the Board of Emerald Empire Counseling on Aging, better known as E ECA. And, uh, we, we, uh, with your help, we've been keeping the Kaufman Center open for the past seven years and our five-year contract with the city is expiring, uh, thirtieth of next month and we will- will not be applying for, to lease it again. And we would, I'd like to thank the Eugene City Council for all, keeping the Kaufman Center open for the past seven years and we could not have done it without your help. We have been working with the Cascade Health Solutions for the past four and a half years and believe they offer a very vital service to the city of Eugene area and hope that you will contract with them directly. We believe they are a perfect fit for this very unique building and we'd be happy to try to answer any questions you might have and again, thank you very much for all your help. Thank you.
Next is Mark Rabinowitz, followed by Michael Peterson.
I wanted to talk about the climate and energy plan that the city has been working on. As a first step, it has some admirable qualities, but there's some omissions. Probably the most important is framing this as we should reduce our energy consumption 50% over the next two decades. This is an important fact. We will be forced by nature to reduce our consumption whether we want to or not. We're past peak oil by two years and anyone who's seen the news out of the Gulf of Mexico knows that the easy oil is winding down. All the oil we use in Oregon flows over very large earthquake faults in Alaska through the Alaska Pipeline and Alaska oil peaked in 1988, 22 years ago. It's on its way out. We're going to have to make do with a lot less. That's the root of the economic crisis that we're in. This is not a cyclical recession. It is a permanent economic contraction. And physics doesn't care about politics, doesn't care about liberals, doesn't care about conservatives or any other flavor. The laws of physics are not subject to government dictate. You can't print oil. Not even the Federal Reserve can do that. I just found out today that the city of Eugene is going to double the fee for getting a community garden. How does that implement our goals for local food? We should be expanding the community gardens program, not making it more difficult for people who lack access to garden space to grow food. We only grow a couple percent of our food in the Willamette Valley. We grow grass seed instead of food. When the oil is gone, we're going to have to grow all of our food here locally, not just 3% or 5% or 10%. And as for Beltline, yeah, it's a waste of money to put up signs, but it's a much bigger waste of money to spend a quarter billion dollars to widen it to the biggest road in the state. That's a scandal much bigger than naming it after a contributor to Ted Koolengowski. Couple final things as the clock winds down. I was not especially surprised today to see in the Register Guard that E-Web now wants to use its new complex to help give Veneta drinking water out of the Mackenzie. Some of us, when we were upset about the $85 million in public debt that was created without a public process, said that one of the reasons for relocating E-Web out of the downtown to the wetlands was to further the spread of Eugene out onto the farmland and now this has come to pass. So, in conclusion, you need to reflect physical limits to exponential growth on a finite planet and reality is the thing that continues to exist even if you don't believe in it. And this is the root cause of the economic meltdown. It's not a recession.
Next is Michael Peterson, followed by Leroy Parks.
Hi, I'm Mike Peterson. I live at Creekside Village. I actually just moved there. It's over by Vala River. Don't quite know the address yet. I'm here to speak about Network Charter School. I personally, after the fourth grade was.
Speak up a little bit, Mike.
I was homeschooled for a good seven years with very little success. When I was little, I had a slight learning disability because it, I had an inflammation in my eye that made it painful to read, so I didn't actually learn to read till I was 14. I'm 18 years old. I'm a senior at Network Charter School and honestly, I don't know if I would have succeeded at all in making money or getting my own apartment without Network Charter School. And before I came there, I, well, I didn't really have friends or connections within the community whatsoever. I mean, I just kind of lived up in the mountains alone and it's helped me build connection with this community, more love for the city of Eugene and helped me have friends and good companions, you know? I really don't want to think about what would be my situation without Network Charter School. I lost my house quite a little while ago, about nine months ago, and I was facing homelessness and every teacher and student and other faculty member I talked to at the time gave me so many resources and options that prevented me from having to spend a night out on the streets. I actually ended up getting a low-income apartment because of the people at Network Charter School. So, I don't know. I mean, I know there's a lot of issues for a lot of things that the city has to face and they're all pretty important, but I'd like you to take some time to really consider giving us what we need because I won't be able to graduate this year without the help of Network Charter School. I know that if I go to a different public school, I really won't graduate and I'd be the first one in my family to ever really get a high school diploma since we came to this country. So, that's pretty big. I mean, that's like seven generations. And I'd really like to graduate from Network Charter and keep the friends I have and the faculty are my friends as well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Leroy Parks is next, followed by Kai.
Hello, I'm Leroy Parks. I live at 28295 KR Nielsen Road, just outside the city. And I'm here to voice my opposition to the renaming of the Beltline. It seems an incredibly wasteful and arrogant maneuver that benefits no one in this community. Only the Pape Corporation, quite frankly, benefits from this. I don't care if it's $2,500,000 or $1,500, it doesn't matter. It's very divisive in this community. I myself will move my account away from the Pape Company and frankly, I think the council has more important things on their agenda like the passion involved with supporting these kids. There's something real here. It's not a posting of a name that doesn't do anything for anyone and I don't think that Randy Pape, who I didn't know, I don't think that he would enjoy this at all, having his name drug through the mud. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Kai is next, followed by Elliot Glazer Flynn, or Glaser Flynn.
Hi, my name is Kai Kuzinski. Sorry, I forgot my last name on the sheet. I live on 618 East Street in Springfield. I go to Network Charter School and without Network Charter School, I don't know what I would do. Before that, I went to a different public school and I didn't learn anything there. I just slept through some of the classes, tried to learn in a couple others, but I just couldn't do it. The teaching styles didn't make any sense and when I had tried to ask questions, I couldn't talk to the teacher because there were so many other students to deal with. And then I had some, I didn't have any friends at all at the public school. I had two friends and both of them went to Network, so I decided to go there since they both said that it was a great school. And I went to try it out and I actually passed all my classes and learned a lot. I enjoyed learning. I just loved it there and now I have tons of friends. The teachers and staff members are my friends. I just love it there and that's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Elliot Glaser, or Glazer Flynn is next and then I think this person, Charles left. I think I saw him leave, Charles Ritalin. I think he's gone.
Hi, I'm Elliot Glazer Flynn. I live at 1690 Wilson Street and I'm a ninth grader at Network Charter School. I recently lived in Fort Collins, Colorado and went to a really amazing charter school there. It was really close-knit and I felt really involved and had great friends. I couldn't imagine going to any other school, but when I found out that I was moving to Eugene, I was getting kind of depressed about leaving my friends, teachers and this great school that I had been in for two years. I came here and within two months, I feel accepted and comfortable and have made a lot of friends and I never would have imagined finding a better school than the one I was in before. Thanks.
Thank you. Steve Wilson is next, followed by Jerry Towers.
My name is Steve Wilson. I live at 4549 Susa Street. I'm here to discuss the Beltline name change. Mayor Piercy, council members, thanks for your time tonight. I appreciate it. I'd like to remain convinced that our elected people are stewards of public will and not automatons with this, within a status quo network of career politicians. Here's what I mean. I'm unclear about something. Given the generous amount of experience among the members, why was A, the cost and B, the source of the cost for this name change, excuse me, not given proper consideration? The basics of political science, PoliSci 101, will tell you this. Where's the money coming from? How much is it going to be? What I see here is a rubber stamp effort. Another thing is knowing that the governor is effectively a lame duck and he's on his way out. Shouldn't more consideration be given, a little more scrutiny to detail? After all, doesn't history prove that on all levels, lame duck candidates are notorious for paying out benefits to buddies on their way out? I'd like to request that you forgive this mistake by endorsing the current ballot initiative in Salem, that we're trying to commit Salem to allow us to put on the ballot a measure to decrease this backroom buddy-type system. What's the worst that can happen? Salem shoots it down anyway, you guys are still heroes of the people. If they accept it, you put it in hands of the people. Win-win. The people are just disappointed, at least the ones I've talked to. For the most part, this disappointment manifests itself as anger, disgust, or distrust because of betrayal of our elected officials. This example of rubber stamping a lame duck buddy-basting decision does not sit well with us. That's why I'm here. Given the painful and necessary nature of political decisions in today's social and economical climate, for council members Polling and Solomon to make the statement in the Register Guard on April 18th that basically renaming was the right thing to do is a bit offensive, honestly. Also, council member Polling, also, you said you, it'd be nice to have a little more information. Mayor Piercy, Vice President Taylor, you both also expressed the same concern as it was mentioned in the article. The problem I have with that is that, well, basically, another basic of political science is that you know all of the facts, ask the right questions, get the information that you need to make an informed decision. And also, it bothers me that you felt comfortable by agreeing to a decision that is equivalent of, say, five teachers. Thank you and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Jerry Towers is next and I think Charles Ritalin just came back in the room, so he'll be after Jerry.
My name is Jerry Towers. I live at 87441 Territorial Road in Veneta and my topic is Beltline. Five Commissioners of the Department of Transportation, in my opinion, voted against the Constitution of the United States when they voted to put Pape's name on Beltline. It is supposed to be of the people, by the people, and for the people and at the Florence Meeting, 90% of the people that spoke wanted to leave Beltline as Beltline and not add the name of Pape. One person spoke in favor of adding Beltline and that would be 10% of the people there. The 90% that talked, the whole, represents the whole state of Oregon. Everybody in Oregon pays taxes to fix the roads. In my opinion, this is wrong. I hope that you can correct this vote by leaving Beltline Beltline. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles? And then the last speaker tonight is Majestis C. Scream. Please just go up here and take your three, take your three.
Please forgive me.
Just give your name and where you're from and then.
My name doesn't even matter.
No, you, Charles, 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 turn and speak to us, please. That's what this is for. Go up to the microphone, please. Please, please go to the microphone. Charles, please go to the microphone and speak to us. Please.
If it's a public forum, please.
Please, yes, but you're supposed to come to the microphone and then speak to the council.
My name.
Everybody in the room will hear you.
But each one of these individuals in here, these represent the people who live in this city. Why? Why in heck would you want to try to change Beltline's name? Why? You know what's sad to me? Sometime I try to use a restroom over at Monroe Park and it's locked up. And you know, the reality of the.
You're trying to record your voice, so stand right there.
The reality of the picture is, why is someone trying to urinate in the bushes to go to the bathroom because the city of Eugene is saving so much monetary value they don't have to pay for the maintenance worker to clean the bathroom? It heartens me. It heartens me to have to, have to even bring something of that nature to this, to this table today. For way too long, this city has been tolerating things that are only evil in this city. What is so good about smoking marijuana? Tell me. And I understand everyone has their freedom to do as they please and I understand it's being addressed, but in one capacity or another, it needs to be dealt with. Please, now I'm going to, for another moment, hear me for a moment. You know what was neat happened? I walked out of this forum because I felt like you didn't want to hear what I had to say. And I know that you each are people too. You're just as important or more important than me if I can, if I can, if I can, I remember when you became mayor again. You know, I was only happy that you were mayor again. When you became mayor again, I was glad for the city. I was so happy that you had become mayor again. I remember a man on this board, all I could do was cry out to God when I had heard that his truck had gone off the road one night when he was traveling and I said, "God, do a miracle for that man." I know him from 40 years ago. You know, when I was a little kid, I used to run through the bushes and watch a television show called Daniel Boone. There was a man named Petzold who had about 500 acres across the street from my papa. Well, there's a road out there that goes through a beautiful valley. It's called Petzel Road. It's called Petzel Road. There is so much, so much potential that this city has. They don't need to try to improve more-
Thank you, Charles. Last speaker is Majeska C. Screen.
Majeska C. Screen, I live at 5th and Van Buren. Hopefully, I won't take three minutes, but we'll see. First of all, I wasn't expecting to see and hear all this, all these great comments from the Network Charter School people. It's really impressive. And I, I really related to what Kimberly Gladen said. And she mentioned the downtown Public Safety Task Team and the, you know, the efforts for safer downtown now and the collaboration that's needed and how Network Charter School and, and these kind of kids can really be part of the kind of collaboration that's needed for success downtown. And I, I really think there, there really needs to be an upcoming phase of the whole downtown plan that does involve this kind of collaboration. And, and yes, those, the folks like Network Charter School, they can represent the, the youth downtown, the stakeholders group that so far has not been included at all in, in these processes. And there's no ongoing plan for a collaboration that's any broader than Public Safety and Social Service Agencies. There's a whole lot more to the mix that needs to be part of the collaboration if we want it to be successful. And it needs to include things like arts and culture and Saturday Market. One of the parents even, you know, mentioned Saturday Market and how Network Charter School at the Pearl Building could connect with that. But I was mainly planning to come and say something about the Beltline renaming. And I, I witnessed that little 30 seconds that you all had in your work session about that. I was really glad when I saw the chronology that was written up after the Register Guard got the information. And I really believe that the process, and including your process on it, was really pretty unseemly. And I, I do hope you rescind your decision, but I think even more important is to make sure that you all have a process and procedures in the future that prevent anything like that from ever happening again. It doesn't reflect well on our elected government when those kinds of decisions of that kind of impact are just slipped into your process the way it was. But on the other hand, if you all would take leadership to help get the building on Pearl for Network Charter School, that would really reflect well on you as our elected government. And I really loved Kimberly's quote. I hope you have the wisdom and fortitude and courage to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public forum and then ask for comments from City Council. And I'll just start out by saying thank you so much for everybody showing up tonight. I don't think that Network Charter School could have had better spokespeople come and show up tonight, both from the students and the staff and the people in the community who care about the school. I think you guys did a terrific job of representing, actually, very articulately how much this school means to the community and to each of you. So thank you so much for doing that. I did want to let people who came for Beltline know that on May 19th, we are going to be working on our policies for those, things that we personally have power to name and endorsement things, like the policies like we had with Beltline. So we will be, we will be doing that. We are going to have our first project to try out our new policy once we establish it because we do have the Willamette Bridge naming coming that we will have to be part of giving, it's an endorsement, I believe, as opposed to, it's not our naming because it's a state bridge, but we will be asked for endorsement. So we'll be sure we have a policy in place for that at that time. And so we'll look forward to that coming. And thank you all for coming to speak about Trudy Kaufman Center 2 and how important that is. Appreciate everyone taking the time to be here. Me, Councilor Pryor.
Thank you. I too appreciate everybody who came and spoke tonight and the folks from Network Charter School. I was on the school board when the school board first endorsed Network Charter School. I remember that vote. And, and you have done really important work and you have provided a very significant alternative. And it's a very tough decision, and I know the city manager has worked a lot on this. And I would ask the city manager if perhaps you could get a memo back to us with an effort to see if there are some brainstorming ideas for looking, for looking at some options. If we need to participate in, in an additional work session or something like that, I don't want to tie your hands behind your back, but I guess what I'm asking, is there a way to look at this from another angle? And just see if there's some additional, maybe with a little more pushing, we might be able to figure something out. But I need to let folks know, we are in a very, very tough financial situation and the city's budget is very constrained. And surplus property, even if it's surplus property, does represent a revenue stream for the city, money that we need. But if there is a way to work it out, I would love to be able to figure out a way to work it out. So if you can, if you can maybe figure out a way to frame it so that we could maybe have some more conversation around it. I don't know where it will go, but I would at least be willing to talk about it some more. I appreciate the folks who come to talk about Beltline. And to remind people again, it was not our decision. We, what it really boils down to is we were asked if we thought it was a good idea. That's it. That's all it was. It's not city money. It's not a city decision. It was not the city's role. We were simply asked, hey, what do you think of the idea? Is this a good idea? And I have to say, even now, if someone asks me, do you think it's a good idea? I knew Randy Pape. I knew him personally. And I think it's a good idea. Now, do I think we should spend $250,000? No. Do I think there could perhaps be a better process to do it? Yes. But those were decisions and processes done by other people, not me. I was simply asked if I thought it was a good idea. And I think it was a good idea. But I don't want to spend $250,000 and I don't want to go through a bad process. And on that, I agree. And the mayor is right. We're going to, as a result of this, look closely at a naming policy so when the city has the opportunity to name something, we'll be much more thoughtful and mindful about it. That's what we learned from this, is when it's our turn to name something, we do want to do it the right way. But this was not our decision. I think it was a good idea, even if I don't want to spend the money. And it sounds like they're going to make that, whatever decision they're going to make. But if someone asks me if I think it's a good idea, yeah, I thought it was a good idea. And I don't want someone to tell me that it was not a good idea if I don't think it was. But I, that doesn't mean I want to spend the money or that I think their process was good.
Councilor Zelenka.
All you folks that came here from the Network Charter School, I'm very impressed. I think the school does good work, Mary. You very articulate and passionately described why this school means a lot to you, and I was swayed by that. And even some of you that were very nervous, you did a great job. I like what you guys are doing at the charter school. And I too would ask the city manager if they're, you're a very creative person, which is why we hired you, see if there isn't a way that we can't figure this out, coming from a different place. As Councilor Pryor said, we are cutting millions of dollars out of our budget. And we are in a very hard financial place, as you well can understand, you are too. So it has to make financial sense for the city as well. So hopefully, we can, we can make something happen. But it needs to make economic sense for everybody. As far as the Beltline is concerned, we are not spending, nor is the state of Oregon spending $250,000 on these signs. That was the initial plan, but that got changed. They're spending $1,500 on those signs. All of the other signs are going to be changed out when they wear out. Cost of that is zero because they would have been replaced anyway. So did the state use the best process? Probably not. They could have done a better job, obviously. So, and then as far as the Kaufman folks are coming to concern, I certainly am going to support that. I think giving you two more years to figure out what you're going to do is a great idea.
Councilor Polling.
Well, I'd like to address the Network Charter School first and to the students that came and spoke. I congratulate you on your efforts, your achievements and your successes. To the staff and people associated with it, thank you for taking these youth under your guidance and showing them what, what can be accomplished. You know, I'm fully supportive of continuing the school. It's just that how are we going to do that is another question. I believe it was the second speaker said that staff has already identified a funding strategy. Mr. City Manager, are you aware of staff working on that and coming up with a different funding strategy?
I'm not aware of our staff.
Could have been their staff, then? Okay, maybe I just misunderstood that. You know, and there's, one of the speakers mentioned the students come from all over Lane County, from the different outlying communities, the different cities. Perhaps maybe we could work with the county. Maybe they can come up with some additional funding on this one. Maybe we need to, to have them go over and talk to the county commissioners about this. But I too would encourage the city manager to, you know, sharpen his pencil again, take a second look at it. I realize you, you spent a lot of time and a lot of effort on the first go-around and it just didn't pencil out. And unfortunately, that's just the way it worked out. But let's see if we can, you know, sharpen that pencil a little bit more and take this at a different angle. As far as the Beltline issue is concerned, I first became aware of the OTC's action, pending action on March 4th through a one-liner email saying that OTC was going to be taking action March 11th to rename Beltline Highway in honor of Randy Pape. I was the one that suggested the motion be put out. And the motion that was actually put out was I moved that the city send a letter to the Oregon Transportation Commission supporting the request to designate the Beltline Highway in honor of Randall C. Pape. Do I think that was the right idea? Yes. Mr. Pape spent a lot of his life dedicating his time to the transportation system primarily here in, in our area. I think it's, he's very deserving of that honor. Beltline Highway, as it is now, has signs saying Beltline Highway and Beltline Road. You know, what is, years ago, it used to be a county road, county road numbers, and I don't remember what it was. Then the county traded Beltline for River Road, which at the time was a state highway. It became Beltline Highway. Became State Highway 69. Now it's State Highway 569. You talk to people out in the community, it's the Beltline. You know, no matter what you name it, it's still going to be referred to as the Beltline. It's like Highway 126 going to the coast. It's Route F. People probably don't know what I'm talking about. Years ago, they used to do rural routes, the mail delivery were rural routes. People still refer to Highway 126 going to the coast as Route F, although it's named Highway 126. So it's just a name. It's just a name in honor, honoring a man that I think is deserving of that honor. And like Councilor Pryor and Councilor Solomon, or Zelenka said, was it the right process? Maybe not. But at the time, we had to make a decision based on the facts that we had at the time. I was the one that proposed the motion. Unfortunately, I wasn't there at the time the vote was taken. I didn't anticipate a 30-second event. I figured we'd have a little more discussion than that. I'm just sorry I missed that part of the meeting.
Easy for you to say. Couldn't resist that, sorry. I guess the only thing I will add to that before we move on to the next item on the agenda is I understand the folks who are here are not satisfied with that, but once we found out the cost, I did make the call to them and suggest, number one, that they phase it in as they make regular sign changes to bring the cost down. And number two, I suggested that if they kept the name Beltline as part of the name, that people could go on calling it Beltline, or they could call it Pape Beltline, or they could call it Randy Pape Beltline, but essentially would not be changing the name significantly in hopes that that would answer some of the concerns that people in the community had. They responded to that. And so I, I understand that you're not totally satisfied with that, but did make a big effort to try to respond to the comments and concerns I heard expressed in the community. And just to finish one more thing, I just want to say to the, I think, I know how hard speaking in front of people can be. And I've been, spent many nervous times doing that myself. And so I just want to say, I think you're really brave to get up here and, and speak not only in front of us, but in front of the television. And for those of you who are graduating, way to go. And, and then someone said, he hoped you'd get a diploma. I hope you get it too. We all do. So, so thank you very much. And we're going to go on about our business, but I just know that you're really, really important to us. Thanks very much. Okay, so, yes, yes.
Well, maybe some of them didn't know they were on TV. Now they do. Now they're probably-
Over and over again.
That's right. And a webcast. I too wanted to comment that I sent a, I, I made a personal plea to the Chair of the OTC, Gail Acterman, that, that they do something different in, in the cost of the signs. And what they ended up doing was pretty much what I suggested, the mayor suggested and other people suggested, which is to phase it in over time so it doesn't cost anything. And that's what they ended up doing. So I think after we took that vote, we became aware of that cost and, and tried to change that policy, and that's what they ended up doing.
Okay. So now the next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Council President, would you put a motion forward?
Move to approve the items on the- Try that button instead. Move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second. Moved and seconded. No one in the queue. Would you please vote? Seven in favor and none in opposition. The consent calendar passes. The next item on our agenda is the ratification of the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission, Regional Wastewater Program Budget and Capital Improvements Program. City Manager, do you have anything you wanted to say about this?
I can just introduce it briefly, Mayor. Thank you. On April 9th, the MWMC held a public hearing on the FY11 Regional Wastewater Program Budget and Capital Improvement Program. Excuse me. At this meeting, the FY11 budget and CP, CIP were approved consistent with the intergovernmental agreement. The budget and CIP also needs to be ratified by the governing bodies of Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County prior to final adoption by MWMC.
Yes. You put the motion on the table?
I move to ratify the FY11 MWMC budget.
Second. Moved and seconded. I see no comments. Oops, Councilor Polling.
Madam Mayor, I believe the people from the Kaufman Centers, their Cascade Solutions still here, maybe they're not aware that their motion was taken care of.
Yes, you, the deed is done, folks, so-
Consent calendar.
On the consent calendar, the approval of the Trudy Kaufman Center lease, okay? So, thank you, Councilor Polling.
And one other thing. Having spent five years on the MWMC Board when I first got elected to the council, we went through a, a long and drawn-out process to come up with a master plan to upgrade the facilities of the MWMC. And, you know, this is just one of many steps in completing this to, to upgrade the system with the changing requirements as far as the water quality, the, the affluence and everything else involved out there. It's a lot of technical stuff out there. So, you know, I'm very happy to support this. I'm glad it's moving forward, and I'm glad to see the progress that we're making on the facility.
Thank you very much. I'm ready to vote, everyone? Nope? Somebody else wants to speak? Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, I too, I'll support this. I think the MWMC does a great job. But I also wanted to recognize someone who's going to be moving on. Peter Ruffier has done an amazing job heading up the, the plant for the city of Eugene for, for forever. And he's moving on to Clean Water Services up in the Hillsborough area. And I just wanted to recognize his really great work and, and the years spent serving the city of Eugene. Thank you, Peter.
Oh, yeah. Good for that. All right. Now I think we're ready to vote. Would you please vote? Seven in favor and none in opposition, so it passes. And with that, we finish the business of the evening. Thank you very much.